Okay. I want to say welcome to everyone. Those of you who don't know me, my name is Laura Spalter. I'm the chair of Bronx Community Board eight. And I welcome you to tonight's public hearing here on one hundred percent Zoom. Regarding the school construction authorities proposed public school located at one six. Park South. They are, as you know, proposing a seven hundred and thirty-six seat primary school at the north side of this region. It was anticipated that new school will be open for students in September of twenty twenty-seven. We are prepared to solicit comments to school construction authority. We, our relationship began December seventh when the school construction authority came to a land use committee meeting. There were very, very few details about the school at that time. Subsequently, they came to a December twenty-second meeting for the education committee, which was taking the place of the board as a whole. At the end of that meeting, Department of Education was also there. There were many questions that could not be answered. And we, the board approved the site, the visitation site for the school. Acknowledging in our resolution that there were tremendous amount of holes. We didn't know about traffic, the environment, the catchment area, the zoning, the parking. And they promised to return to the board with those details. At the very end of June, they issued a environmental review, an EAS, and a NACDEC. And that is where we are today. They are taking comments on the NACDEC. Now, I'd like to also thank Sylvia for her help in organizing this tonight. And we'll be hearing from her later on. At this juncture, I think I would like to present a five-minute little presentation that will bring us up to speed on what we're doing here tonight and what we hope to accomplish as, as time goes on. Okay, Pablo? Just be patient, we'll get that rolling. Okay, so here we are on tonight. We are not able to see the sound. Everybody's calling to wish me happy birthday, mother family. So here we are, next slide. Oh wait, I just want to look at the sound. I just want to have a see the site in relation to the whole rest of the neighborhood. There it is, it's approximately two acres, the entire site. Okay, next slide Pablo. Okay, so a big question, why are we holding a hearing without the school construction authority presence? We have invited them to attend this meeting, but they have declined. And the purpose of tonight's hearing offers the board, offers you the community, additional opportunities to engage with the community and for us to get more comments. They did state in writing that they will respond to our comments and questions. They did agree in writing to come back in the process to discuss design, construction, with representatives from the Department of Education. Now, this is where I think tonight's discussion by the public is particularly important. We are mandated by the city charter to meet publicly with city agencies, DEP, DOT, DOE. That's what we do. And we will do that now. And throughout the seven-year process that this is going on and even after completion. So tonight's hearing helps the board with a blueprint for addressing current issues because there are current issues that have already been raised at board meetings. You know, and they will all be taken into consideration when we plan our agendas. So that is why, even though they declined to come regarding the NACDEC, we are here. Okay, next slide. Okay, so the proposed PS at one sixty Van Cortlandt Park South. There are two pictures here. The one on the right is definitely going to change. It shows what they, what they have planned now. They are at the very, very beginning of their planning. The one on the left is very important because it shows the whole two-acre site. And there's half an acre of the school, school is purple. And the building is all the rest of it with that area in between. We see the whole impact of the site and the proportion of what's, of what's being constructed there. As you know, we didn't have a presentation by the developer of the portable housing Tishman until this month. And because it was so separate from the school, construction authority, their beginning ones, it was difficult to see this whole impact until now, unfortunately. So just a few facts are up here, it'll open in twenty twenty-seven, seven hundred and thirty-six students, free cage five, half an acre of performance waiting for science visitation. The main entrance is on Review Place. So, okay, thank you, next slide. Now, what is the negative declaration? We call it a NACDEC. The school construction authority has issued a NACDEC. And they have determined that the proposed project will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, including but not limited to traffic, parking, flooding noise, air quality, shadows, sewer system. Because their plans, which is over two hundred pages, explains how they will mitigate those impacts. And they are not required to do an environmental impact statement. And they are not required to hold a hearing according to State Law C work. And, but like I said, after this period and when they're along, moving along with their progress, they will come back to the board at a public meeting. Okay, next slide. Now, here I showed, I pulled some examples of how the school construction authority proposes to mitigate traffic impacts. Now, you, the people who live in the neighborhood, know this area, these intersections, these issues very, very well. And I'm sure they'll hear more from you tonight. This is what I took out of the two hundred-plus-page documents. So the map shows areas that they looked at. The problem, for example, traffic impacts at the intersection of Broadway and West Thirty-Eighth Street. Their mitigation is to change the signal timing of the signals. A problem, intersection of Van Cortlandt Park South and New View Place. Again, okay, here they implement a traffic signal, a new traffic light. Another problem, intersection of West Fortieth and Van Cortlandt Park South and Broadway. They plan to have a signal timing adjustment and parking regulation changes on the approach. I don't know what this means, you don't know what this means. This is where we ask more questions and we continue to meet with DOT. The last two are pedestrian impacts. And you know, they want to increase the sidewalk width by reducing existing constructions. And you know, this is an example. I did speak with DOT. I did ask them if these, what appeared in the document, has it been approved by DOT? They said they work very closely with school construction authority on this. And yes, it is approved. And I asked them when they come back to the board to study and to look at things as, as we wish. And they said, yes, they would. So that's DOT. Are there any, you know, I expect we'll hear a lot more later on this from, from the public and from the board members. Okay, next slide. Okay, this is issues and concerns. We did get these straight from the documents. Sylvia has questions about playground area as other board members, rooftop area. You know, it's, it's one of those weird things. Several times in the document, we saw that it was five stories. The NACDEC states five stories. However, the discussion of the rooftop play area references eight stories. As it appears, the roof has been divided between the seven and eight floors. So there are different inconsistencies that we definitely want to check on our list. Continue, next slide.
Hi Marty.
Next slide. Now, okay, other issues and concerns, staging, where will the project be aged on property off-site? Heavy equipment, nobody wants to lose parking. School buses, where will they park? Traffic congestion, safety impacts, lack of auditorium, stormwater runoff. Area is prone to flooding. How will they control storm runoff runoff during and after construction? And then there were TEP rules, which they swear that they're going to follow. However, they have probably any land in which to do much mitigation. So this remains to be seen, but we have to be on top of that soil and groundwater conditions. Are there any other slides? That might lead to the last one, that's the last one. So I just want to throw out a little information about the document. And if you have more comments, you always contact Bronx Community Board eight. And if you want to copy down the sites, we'll leave this up for a few minutes to the school construction authority directly. But they have said that they will respond to all our comments. Now, about how tonight's public hearing will run. So they can see you better. Yeah, okay. They can always contact the board, you know, for more information. All right, so that kind of is my introduction. And I, I plan to hold speakers. We have a speaker's list. And if you wish to speak and you're not on the list, no problem, but please raise your hand. This is how we'll run it to begin with. We will start with three minutes, okay? You don't have to speak for three minutes. Speechable amount of time, Pablo has the sign. Then when you have thirty seconds left, thirty seconds, Pablo will raise his hand. And then when time's up, okay? We know what that means, you know, please finish up or Pablo will mute you. We'll hear from the public first and then board members. We might as well get started, okay? We were able. Marty, let me hand up. Marty?
Yeah. I'm still confused by what we're being told and not being told. I've looked at the impact statement and to me, I have the same problem I had at the last discussion.
But Marty, if we could wait, public speak first, please? And then board members.
Hello, I have a screen of Sylvia, but I don't hear nobody else.
Someone muted themselves who should be speaking.
It looks like they logged off somehow. Or maybe were kicked off.
Right.
Laura, are you on?
Laura's not on the chat, I mean, on the screen.
I know she isn't, but she should still be here.
Well, but she's not.
Because she has the list of speakers.
Right. But.
Actually, no one from the board office there, neither is.
But somebody else must be the co-host, otherwise this would, would die. So somebody has the co-host.
Myra has been made the host.
I don't know why I'm the host, I don't have the list of speakers. So does it?
Bob, do you know where Laura went?
I have no idea.
Maybe they went down or something, let's just wait.
She must have got cut off because, I mean, her, she just.
We need the list.
Right, we, yes.
Well, I, I would just say, without the list, why don't we just open it up for people from the community to start asking questions?
Then you raise your hand.
I don't really see what else we can do.
Right.
Then point of order, Mr. Vice Chair, point of order, please. Can we determine if we have a quorum? Will there be a roll quorum? Do we have a quorum? Thank you.
As far as I'm aware, this is a public hearing. I don't know that it's, it's a board meeting that requires a quorum.
Does anybody have Laura's number to contact her and get the list?
I'm texting, I'm texting her.
Because some of us have requested in advance to speak.
For public hearing, I don't think you need a quorum.
Who just spoke on that? Who's giving the legal opinion, we don't need a quorum? I'm sorry, I didn't hear who that was.
I don't know who that was, but Rosemary, this is Kelly Buford. I just spoke with Laura, they are frozen and they are trying to reconnect to the Zoom call, okay?
As vice chair, Bob, would you take over calling on hands? So we can do something?
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree. I mean, obviously, we have to keep the meeting going until Laura and Pablo are able to get back online.
And the meeting is still being recorded, so it's okay.
Right, so, so the last, the last question was who, who in the community wants to speak? Again, apologies, I don't have the list of speakers. Nobody here seems to have it other than Laura. So we'll just call on people who raised their hands. And at the moment, I see Christina Carlson. So Christina, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. And I'm sorry that Laura is not here. I wanted to thank her for her explanation of some of that information. So my name is Christina Carlson. I've spoken to the community board before. I'm an owner at one eighty Van Cortlandt Park South. And I'm sure as everyone at this meeting recognizes, the proposed development at the former visitation site is of enormous concern to me, to my family, to my neighbors, many of whom are on this call, as it poses some very real threats to our safety, our security, our way of life, as well as to the unique character of the Kingsbridge neighborhood and particularly this little corner. Those of us who live next door to the site will be disproportionately affected by these threats, which include, but are not limited to, limited to environmental impact. I'm very curious about this negative declaration because it's hard to see how a massive loss of trees, the total clearing of the site and the inclusion of two massive buildings will not negatively impact flooding and sinking, which is a known problem at this, at this location. I think it would be a grave mistake to build past the, the current scope of the property and to build buildings on a site which is already prone to sinking and flooding. I feel like this proposal is a problem before it even gets started, that we have an opportunity to stop parking and traffic. I'm very disheartened to see how our building is boxed off by those four little red corners. I feel like we are being trapped. This area is already reaching capacity in terms of parking spaces. And during morning and evening rush hour, traffic is backed up between Broadway and I-87. The traffic created by a seven hundred-plus-seat school during these peak times will, between school buses, parent drop-off and pickup, and the approximately one hundred and fifty employees looking for spaces would be, in my mind, unsustainable and make it impossible for local residents to get to and from their own homes. Additionally, how many spaces will the neighborhood lose due to Department of Education spaces? Especially since the Tishman Spire project only includes seventy additional spaces. Has the need for the school been addressed? We need, we agree that the site is ideal for a school. But is the project as proposed the best option? Do we really need a seven hundred-seat school? I'm thinking of St. John's, which is closed. We have a school building, visitation obviously closed, we have a school building. Do we need so many seats? Is it the best design to serve the community? No one is opposed to affordable housing or to good new schools. But those of us who live here, and by here, I mean literally right next door to the proposed site, understand that the scale of this proposal is completely out of proportion to the neighborhood and its needs. And thus would create more problems than it would solve. We ask that the project be radically reconsidered. We've already asked Tishman Spire to rethink their residential building. And we now ask the school construction authority, who is not here this evening, to rethink the new school design and come up with one that has fewer desks, thus mitigating the impacts of traffic and parking, a smaller footprint, one that does not pose such a threat to the land itself and the flood plain that they are planning to build on, and one that works with the natural environment, preserving trees and making sure that the children this school purports to serve will have a safe, outdoor, ground-level playground as opposed to a rooftop cage that nobody even knows how tall it's supposed to be or a lot the size of a single basketball court. The school construction authority has a unique opportunity in front of them to develop a site surrounded by nature. Right, look at that site, look at the trees, look at the surrounding area. Instead of working against it to the detriment of this community, they should work with it to mitigate the threat of flooding, to harmonize with the surrounding neighborhood and to give children the space, fresh air and exposure to nature that we know is good for them. This neighborhood is not dense inner city and they shouldn't build like it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I understand that the connection has been reestablished in the board office and Laura is back on.
Bob, thank you because we had a blackout and we were frozen. And I'm glad that the meeting has, has continued. Thank you, Christina. You did submit earlier from the gallery session your testimony and this is different, I believe.
Yes, I wrote it specifically with the school construction authority in mind and I'll be happy to send that to you.
Thank you very, very much. Is Jody on? Call. Just. Okay. Giovanni, well, Giovanni.
Yes, hi, good evening, everyone. Before, really my testimony, I, I need to air the concern of many constituents in Community Board eight. And that is changing the venue of this important public hearing tonight at the last minute is disrespectful, is uncoachable, unrepentable conduct. And we understand and believe that once again is, is a, a saying to the Mayan community, put up participation. Having said that, I like to, I don't want to be repetitive, of course. My predecessor already said many of the, of the concerns that I had that I was going to say. But of course, we have what was said about the safety of the children, but also the negative impact of this proposal in terms of traffic congestion. And we said before, noise, parking, bicycle, pedestrian mobility. But what we really want is to request the following from the community board. When I say we, I'm talking on behalf, I believe I have myself, the community and the building where I live, one eighty-one Collin Park. And one is we like to request that the school construction authority and this Spire make a joint presentation to the board regarding this proposal. Two, we ask the community board put out a resolution requesting the developer, the developer make modification to the proposal to share back the plan. That's what we ask the community board to do, please, to put out, put out resolution. And three, we ask the community board to receive any support for the proposal until after the school construction authority and the developer comply with the four, I mentioned a, a four-mension request, which, which, as I said before, that they make a joint presentation and that the developer make a, a modification to this huge, humongous development.
Thank you, thank you, Giovanni.
Thank you.
And next is Alexandria, Ms. Paulie, Alexandria.
Hi, how are you doing today? I just want to thank you for the presentation that you disclosed earlier to us because it did address some of the concerns that I do have. But I just want to address the building and the school project that is to be built. I know neighborhoods grow and change and that's just the reality of life. However, we need to reconsider what we're adding to our community. Having the apartment building with three hundred and thirty-six units is excessive. The tenants of Putman Avenue buildings will require parking spaces and seventy parking spaces isn't enough. A building that large should have at least one hundred and fifty parking spaces. We struggle finding parking now. Sometimes it takes our neighbors over an hour to look for a parking spot. Adding a building of that size to our small neighborhood will make parking even worse. I understand that project managers think that people will take the train. However, since COVID, car sales have increased and parking spots have decreased. There are other concerns such as, how will you ensure that our sewage system won't back up and cause problems? This has been an issue in this neighborhood in the past. I've been in the neighborhood for eleven years now and we've had to deal with this several times. Also, our building, one eighty Van Cortlandt Park, is built on swampland. How will you ensure the residents that the construction won't disserve the foundation of our building and our property? I agree that a new school should be put in our neighborhood due to overcrowding in nearby schools. It is important that we keep class sizes low and give our students an opportunity to learn and grow successfully. However, part of being successful is also having a large outside space to run and play in addition to a playground and no, not one on top of a rooftop. Most of our students live in small apartments and then they go to overcrowded classrooms. They don't need a cramped space to play in. They need open space. It's bad enough that our classroom and our schools are made from the material that jail cells are made out of. Due to, sorry. Do we really need our students playing in a small enclosed yard too? As a New York City Department of Education teacher, I struggle, I strongly suggest, sorry, I strongly suggest that the city assesses the neighborhood, which I saw that was in the plan. So I'm going to skip over that part. But it is definitely heartbreaking to see that cars whip around the corner very quickly and do not allow pedestrians to cross the street. A school that is seven hundred students, it is not safe for the properties to be so small. And with the sidewalks being, the sidewalks need to be widened as well, which means that the building will need to be pushed back. Again, with parking, schools reserve parking for nine hours. This is unacceptable because we have people who work at night and come home during the day to, to find parking and we'll struggle with that now as well. Last, I want to say that a fire drill, during fire drills, where would the students be? The students must be away from the building. Does that mean they will be lining up in front of our building? How will that work? Van Cortlandt Park area is very congested, cars can't turn. Van Cortlandt Park area is very congested. Cars can't turn down str- side streets due to cars blocking the intersection and cars struggle to get on highways due to the volume of traffic. How will we be able to, stop please, how will we be able to reassure our, our neighbors here that there will not be double parking of parents, guardians, and caregivers picking up their children? This is going to make commute longer for all, for everyone. I strongly believe that we need a school, maybe not to this size, but we need a school building with a large play area on the ground for our students to learn and grow. We also are not opposed to having a building, but a building with three hundred and forty apartments is excessive. In my opinion, it should be half the size and more of the land should be devoted to our students and the well-being of them. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, Alexandria. Um, Alexandria, have, have you sent your testimony into the board office?
I did send it in yet last night, but I am more than happy to send it again if you'd like to.
I know, I see it here. I see it here. Very important and thank you very, very much. I have. Is Ryan McGuire on the call? Okay, um. Is there anyone from the community who would like to speak? We are finished with the speakers list of people who called in and registered to the board.
Yes, I would like to speak.
Hope on the public, not on the board members that are structured. Okay, Patrick.
This is Patrick's wife.
Okay.
And I am calling, I showed up to your site. Let's just say I'm unhappy the last minute change that happened. I think that it stopped a lot of people from showing up to this meeting. But that's neither here nor there. I also want to know. Like in twenty seventeen, when they were supposed to build a homeless shelter and they were building luxury apartments on Broadway and suddenly turned into a homeless shelter? Is this going to happen to us? Okay, for one, it's not like the city cares what's going on in our wetlands. We're overrun with rats in that area, absolutely overrun with rats. And then you're going to add construction to that with no plan about road and control? We just, we had that BJ's built, okay? Now you're going to put school buses and those trucks on our road? When you know that on two thirty-eight street that the bridge had to be braced for ten years? And now you're saying, oh, it's okay, let's add more weight, more traffic to the street? I'm sorry, this is incoherent right now because I just found about meeting today. But I am irate at school board eight, at, at, at District Eight because this is a regular thing for you guys. You find a way to screw us in Kingsbridge by giving Riverdale everything.
Um, may I have your name, please?
My name is Anna Gagan.
Anna, and spell your last name, please.
G E A G A N.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. Uh, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak?
They can't speak because they don't know about the meeting because the venue was changed.
We had a lot of debate over this. There were people who really wanted us to do this switch. And I regret and I apologize. I do. Um, is there anyone else from the? Okay, now if you're a board member and you wish to speak, please raise your hand. And again, uh, I'd like to hold it to, uh, two to three minutes max, please. And we'll keep the same process going so that we can move along. And, uh, again, thank you, everyone. I, I will say that, um, schools in Kingsbridge are very overcrowded. Which is why we supported the site of school because for thirty, forty years, um, the board and others, the elected officials have been looking for a site in Kingsbridge, uh, or a school. Okay, board members, I see Marty and I see Rosemary. Marty, go ahead.
Yeah, first I want to echo what Giovanni said. We are fooling ourselves that we're going to have individual meetings with, uh, with Tishman Spear and then SCA. We need to have a meeting with both together because we're getting different information, constantly different information. I was the impression initially that the school construction was going to be on the current school. And I was told by Tishman Spear that it was not going to be. It's going to be on the south side as opposed to on the east side. And yet what I read in the declaration is the school's in a different place entirely. Uh, so I don't know where the school is. I don't know.
The current parking lot, the west side.
Well, that's what you have now. The fact is you've been told different things by different people.
You know, Marty, it's absolutely, you're absolutely right. And they're still, uh, designing the school. So you're right. And they all have to come together. Absolutely. That's the only way.
Declaration is concerned about shadows over Van Colen Park. What shadows? The school as prepared, as presented to us by Tishman Spear is going to be swallowed up by the giant building. There are no shadows of any concern to the park because it won't be facing the park. And just finally, um, I looked at the diagram you showed today. We were told previously that the school yard was going to be for early childhood. And yet the diagram you showed today has the early childhood, uh, pre- and on the other side of the building, there's offices facing that school yard. So I don't know what it's for, who it's for. We know it can't be for fifth and sixth grade students. It's just not big enough. So there's misinformation and there's no information and there's counter information and we're not getting any of it. That's correct.
Thank you, Marty. Uh, Rosemary.
Hmm, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I will, uh, I'll be brief too. Um, uh, uh, fir- first off, I think it was a mistake to, uh, not have the meeting, uh, where it was advertised and stated for a long period of time. Uh, as a community board member, I received the notification two hours before the meeting was to start. Um, it's just a mistake that it should not have been done. Look at how few people, I'm sure there would have been more people, uh, uh, coming. Um, so that is mistaken. I, and I think, um, this community deserves another hearing on this, uh, topic. Um, nu- number two, uh, both School Construction Authority and the developer should be there. Uh, they, they stand as two different projects, but they stand on the same block. And, uh, the impact of, uh, traffic and height and open space, et cetera, is a, is a shared concern for this site, including, uh, what I believe to be, um, uh, too dense a development for a single block in this community. Uh, so, uh, and, and last, well, yeah, your presentation, uh, may have been helpful. It just is, it's not sufficient to, to answer the questions that community members would want to ask. Both of those entities should make presentations to this board. I could go on and on about all the question for School Construction Authority and the very thin, the thinnest of presentations by Tishman Spire at Land use. Uh, neither of these are sufficient or courteous to this community. Uh, so again, I think it's a mistake to have, uh, changes to a Zoom meeting. I think there needs to be another public hearing for this community with representatives of both agencies appearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Uh, Chuck.
Let me be clear about a few points. One, this meeting was convened today via Zoom because the mayor of the city of New York yesterday issued an executive order permitting Zoom and recommending it. Not because the chair wanted to do it, not because any member of the board wanted it. Indeed, I urge you to be careful. So that's number one. This is not us. This is the mayor of the city of New York. In his wisdom, he decided at the last moment to suspend the state ban against Zoom meetings and to order it under his executive authority. So let's be clear about that.
But we only heard about it today.
We heard about it two hours before the meeting from the borough president, not even the mayor.
And did he say you couldn't have in-person meetings or did he just say you could have a Zoom meeting?
Point of order, we have, point of order, we have somebody speaking, please, like that person speak.
I'm, I'm not interrupting anymore and I apologize greatly for any inconvenience this has caused. Chuck, please continue. No more interruptions.
Second, I agree with everything that has been said concerning this subject, having the two of them together, but let's get real. I have sent that portion, which is the, uh, residential people to go take another look at what they've designed and come back. What they presented was perhaps the single least informative uh, set of drawings, renderings and the like that I've seen in doing this for thirty years. Uh, didn't have entrances, exits, did a zoning calculations, didn't have any of the information, much of which, uh, Rosemary pointed out at the meeting. And they're aware of that now. You can't take this board, the people in this community, uh, for granted. We are the branch. That doesn't mean we're stupid. That's number two. Number three, you're not going to get the school authority, which is about the most arrogant entity in the state, second only to the N- New York, uh, Department of Transportation, perhaps, to do anything that you want as a community. They don't care. They believe that as an authority, they can do what they want. I do know, because she served as president of the Housing Development Corporation, one of the board members, I will be in touch with her tomorrow. But I will tell you, um, this is wrong. Our state senator should notify, either the current one or the new one. The dormitory, the, uh, School Construction Authority, which does report to the Senate for confirmation that if they do this, they're not going to get confirmed. And our assembly representatives should follow suit and also limit their budget. These folks are about as arrogant as I have ever seen. They don't care. We send them a letter, they say, we're not coming. We tell them your credibility is going to be a loss. They don't respond. I will tell you, one of the strongest letters I've seen in many years was that which Laura and Sylvia put together and sent to them and said, this is wrong. So now let's get real and see where we are and where we're going. One, School Construction Authority has no credibility in my view. I say that to you notwithstanding the fact that a former president was an associate of mine who worked for me and who I will also reach out to. Number two, School Construction Authority will come to you when they need you. And then they will tell you exactly what they want to say. They are not to be believed. So we start with that awful premise. The only way to deal with that is the kind of pressure that communities and only communities that are organized can be prepared to do. And that is to be very clear to them, we're not going to take this anymore. And that's something that has to be made clear in every way that you can as individuals and through this board. With respect to the developer, that process has already started. It's underway through various governmental entities and not just, uh, through the community board. As I said before, that was, and as Rosemary said, perhaps the thinnest presentation we've seen in a long, long time. This is an ideal site for affordable housing and affordable housing is desperately needed in this community and in this city. And by affordable housing, I mean housing that's affordable for people, not on paper. What's affordable in Park Avenue isn't affordable in Riverdale. And what's affordable in Riverdale isn't affordable in Kingsbridge. And what's affordable in Kingsbridge isn't affordable in the South Bronx. So let's get real on that level as well. This is a very serious issue of whether government totally dominates the people of the city of New York or whether the people of the city of New York have something to say. And so what I would ask of each of you is to join with the board in applying what we intend to do. And Laura has made very clearly she intends to do it as chair of the board. Is to apply maximum pressure on both entities to get real. Otherwise they will lose not only our support but credibility. And I thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Are there any more hands up tonight? Um, I do not see any hands up. I'll wait another minute. I, I want to thank everyone for their comments. Oh, Christina. Where's?
I don't, I don't have another comment. I do have some questions and I'm not sure if, if this is the time to ask them or if you, if that's a, okay. Um, you know, I, I am grateful uh, that I have heard most people that I have heard speak from the board um, seem to be opposed to this, uh, project in its current form. Um, which I appreciate. Uh, you know, it is, it is frustrating to think that you are in something alone. Um, and so having the members of the board, uh, speak, um, their own frustrations is, is heartening. Um, but I would like to address this comment um, by, uh, Mr. Mordler, which is having a united approach to dealing with this. Uh, we've in our building have been saying this for a long time. We would like to do that. We are perfectly happy and willing, uh, to mobilize with our, uh, with our local officials, with the police department, with, um, certainly with Community Board Eight. We in fact would love to have somebody come to our building and talk to us about what we as residents can do. Um, and so I hope that there is a, there is a, a plan in place or some ideas in place uh, on the part of the board to make that happen. Having said that, I would say that, um, you know, despite what I'm hearing about this, um, you know, bored feelings about this project, we have gotten mixed messages over the past. Um, I, I'm talking about Patrick's iPad, uh, you know, made the point that we have had assurances about things in the past that have basically ended up being to our detriment. Uh, the homeless shelter being a prime example of one. Um, and it is true. It does feel like Kingsbridge bears a disproportionate, um, disproportionately bears the brunt of some of this decision-making. Uh, the fact that this meeting was moved to Zoom, yes, because of what the mayor said, but not because it was a necessity. Um, is frustrating to say the least. So what, what I would like to hear tonight from the board is, you know, how can we partner? What can we do and how can we as residents be enfranchised to be a part of that process? Thank you.
Well, we have elected officials, unfortunately. Are there any elected officials on the board tonight? Just, uh, just a minute. I'm just asking. We, we do, tonight there was some kind of, um, convention that has drawn the, uh, the elected officials to, and they had said to me many times they would be coming, but they would be late, but I don't think they have arrived yet. I think that they're very, very key in this. Um, I see Camilla's hand and I see Myra and Bob Bender. And then we'll circle back to Chuck, okay? Um, Camilla.
Yes, hi Laura. Just, yeah, very quickly, no worries. I will not get to two minutes. I just wanted to, you kind of guessed actually my question, Laura. I mean, I'm very surprised. I'm only seeing here on the Zoom participants, all right, from Assemblymember, uh, Dinoits' office. How come we don't have nobody from the council member, uh, Dinoits', uh, office to tell us what the council thinks about this? I mean, this is a New York City project, both as far as school access and, um, affordable housing. I mean, where is our council member? And also they were not there about the discussion in the traffic and transportation, the other controversial thing that just happened. So I would beg the office to make a more concerted, uh, effort. So I would beg the office to make a more concerted effort to have our elected representatives tell the community what they believe about these projects. This is extremely important. We are an advisory body, but these people are people in executive positions that cast votes, our elected representatives. So I do believe that the board, the board could reach out a little bit more, not to hear only from people, but for the people, for the community people to hear from the people they voted for. Thank you.
Thank you. Myra and then Bob.
Thank you. When the SCA first came in front of the Education Committee and presented this, we thought it was a great idea because we do need more classroom seats. But to be perfectly frank and very short, in the current iteration, I think that we would find this completely unacceptable. And I would also just like to say, a school needs to have an auditorium. And that's all I have to say.
Uh, Bob, thank you. Thank you, Myra. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I'm sorry, we're spending time on whether we should have had this meeting in person or on Zoom. You know, we've had thirty-five people on the Zoom, and would we have had thirty-five people in person? I have no idea, and I don't think anybody else knows the answer to that question. But but to get to the point I want to make and the and the question that Christina Carlson raised, since there there seemed to be a number of people living adjacent to the site who have some very strong concerns about it, what I would suggest is is that you put together a brief statement of what your concerns are. A couple of people have spoken very articulately about what those concerns are. Send them to the board office, and we will send them to the elected officials. As as Chuck Mirdler has said, the the next step in this process is we've got to communicate clearly to our elected officials what our concerns are. Yes, we need the school. Yes, we need affordable housing. But do we need this project exactly as it has been presented to us? And and certainly the sense I'm getting from all of the comments is no, it's, this scale is is a serious problem. So what can you do? What you can do is put together a statement that briefly encapsulates your concerns about the project. Get as many signatures as you can from the residents of the buildings that are adjacent to the site. Send it to the board office. We will get it to the elected officials. And and they're our only recourse at this point. That's what we have to do. We have to get the elected officials united behind a position on how this project can go forward at the proper scale and not at the scale it currently is. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Focusing now on the board members, and then I'll go back to the board. Thank you, Chuck. Whoops, unmute yourself, Chuck. Unmute.
I'm sorry, Ms. Carlson, I need to answer a couple of points you made. Give you some clarification in that which Ms. Teplis raised. The School Construction Authority is a state agency. It is not a city agency, which is exactly why the pointer has to be at the state senate, because they and they alone confirm the board members. And so that's the first point of pressure that we have to do. We have two and a half state senators. One of them is on her way out, and that's half. The other one, Rivera's on his way in, although he represented this area previously. He's the key point on this. He's chairman of the Senate Health Committee, and that's the major pressure, and letters ought to go out to him immediately saying how strongly the people feel. That's number one. Number two, I think we have to take a look at the process first before we get down to the begin, to the points. If you have the school as a problem, and in my view, as counsel to the United Federation of Teachers, which I have represented for thirty years, if you have a school that doesn't have an auditorium, you have a school that has its kids playing on the roof, that's not a school. That's not going to be helpful to people. What you have to do, what you have to do, in my view, for what my view is worth, is that we've got to get the process straightened out. You can't just do what SCA did. It came to a committee of this board, gave them a story, said they weren't fully ready, we'll come back and report some more. The story was wrong, and they refused to come back. You can't do that. That's, that is the height of arrogance. With respect to the developer, solely to his credit, doesn't mean he's right. It means he is now back there looking. He met within the past week with representatives of our sanitation committee to go, oh, look at the issues that you raised, Ms. Carlson, about water and the like, and those were addressed by them. I don't know the answer yet. We'll get a report. They're going to be meeting with the traffic and transportation people. They're going to get input, and we are then going to get a decent set of plans that'll make some sense. We'll get response from them. I have no doubt. Whether we like it or not is a different matter. But the issue is the process of getting people to understand, A, they work for you, not you for them. And number two, that they understand that the people in this community don't want to be treated like dirt. They want to be treated like voters, citizens and taxpayers, and they have a right to be informed. The misconduct of SCA, in my view, was about as disgraceful as anything I've ever seen. And I think every member of that group ought to get fired.
Thank you, Chuck. Patrick's iPad. That's Anna.
Yes, ma'am. I just want to comment that they can't even goodwill gesture, keep the area around the school clean. It is, it is an eyesore. It is a blight what they've allowed the building to become. It is covered in graffiti, and they won't show up to this meeting to face people, to tell us what's going on, but they let the property get more and more rundown while we try to figure out. The neighborhood tries to figure out what's going on. I don't understand it.
I think that we can deal with the garbage and whatnot complaint now. I was there recently, and you're correct. A deserted, you know, abandoned site collects that, but they have to clean it up. Okay, so the the dirt, garbage. Thank you. Thank you. We have the chair of the United Sanitation Committee on the call, and I'm sure she's taking notes. Thank you. Uh, Ronnie. Ronnie, you're muted?
Yes, yes, sorry. I couldn't find the mute button. Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate the clarification around like which elected officials we should be pressuring. I just have a question for clarification. I know that because of redistricting, I thought our senator was Robert Jackson, now Gustavo Rivera, in this case, for this particular side of the neighborhood. I just want to make sure that we have the right name.
Yes, you do. You have the right.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, so that that's, yeah, I'm also a resident of One Eighty Van Cortlandt Park South. So that's why I wanted to make sure, because I have a high interest in reaching out to him, specifically in the school matters, because my son goes to PS seven, which is the closest school around here. And their enrollment at PS seven, which is a very large school, is four hundred and ninety-one students, as I see here on the website. And the school that's been proposed is such a small space next door. It's more than that. So that's very troublesome, and we really need to relay this information to the appropriate elected official. So that's pretty much all I wanted to make sure I have the right information. Thank you.
And thank you. We we need to clarify that. Proportions. Are there any other hands up? Uh, I do not see any other hands. I just want to thank everybody joining the meeting tonight. We have a lot of work ahead of us to do. This is.
Rosemary has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, good. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, to underline a point I have been trying to make. It is writing questions to send to these two entities. It's fine, but it's it's not enough. This community needs and deserves presentations from these entities. You can't figure out what the issues are or what the questions are until you get a full presentation. Otherwise, you're just guessing what the issues and questions are. You have a feeling for your community, but you need that presentation. I also think individuals writing their questions or issues is also good, but again, not sufficient. Public hearings where people in the community hear their neighbors, hear what other concerns are, that is the best way to get to the real issues that affect this community. This is our job as a community board. And I, again, I go back, I hope that there will be another hearing that both entities are invited so that this community can get full presentations and be able to develop true issues and questions to give back to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. We are an advisory board, advisory in the city of New York, and we will lean very heavily on every elected official because many times we invited School Construction Authority. We had back and forth that's been going on and on and on. And we have to lean on our elected officials, and we will have to be united, and we have to get and get them for here. And that's, we're going, we're going to be united on that, because I I think we did hear important facts here tonight, and now we we have to take them. So I, Christina Carlson, our last speaker tonight. Good, Christina.
Yeah, and this is just a question. You know, your information at the beginning was very helpful in terms of of getting an overview of of how the School Construction Authority has responded to some of our initial concerns. Is there any way for a member of the public, a concerned resident, to have a look at that report? Because I, you know, I would be curious to know, you, who are they consulting on environmental issues? If this is not something that the Department of Environmental Protection needs to look at? Where are their numbers coming from? How are they arriving at this? I think that this is something that we, you know, I'm not sure, after hearing everything that I've heard, why we should take them at their word. And I'm also wondering if these things are not available to the public or if there is any aspect of this that is not transparent, what legal recourse we have to demand it and to 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 stop the process if they won't give it to us?
Well, the report is on every agenda that went out. There are links. There are links to the NACDE, and then there are links to the report. And we are asking for studies where they got, we are asking them for more information on appendixes that are hundreds of pages that we didn't get. So all those links are going to be on our website, and that information is available. And according to the information that they sent, they have consulted with all the city agencies, DEP, DOT. They have, you know, they have, according to the NACDE. So the information is there, and it is our job to continue to work with those city agencies. And it's our job to get our elected officials involved in this and get everyone to the table. So Chuck has been fantastic. He is, you know, we're all working. An authority is dependent agency unto themselves. The School Construction Authority, Sylvia, I, I think you should just end this by discussing anything that you would like to throw out as the chair of the Education Committee. If you would like to. No, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but you've you've been working with School Construction Authority for ways for years. If you have anything you'd like to say, that's fine. No? Okay. Dan, go ahead and start.
I'm sorry, am I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I apologize for being late. I did have another meeting. And obviously, like, our meeting has been shifted around a little bit as well. But, you know, I have, you know, just a few points to make. And I'll try to be brief, but we'll start here. The SCA, and I guess the process by which we were here, you know, quite frankly, what we've seen from the SCA, at least like the documents out there on the EAF, it appears that the design doesn't take, you know, into consideration any of the major factors, which we in this community have seen become a problem and a nuisance historically for years. And things that we know can be designed into a structure, you know, to alleviate certain problems. Specifically, I know traffic is one of those big ones. And nothing in the SCA design shows that they've done anything to do that. What we have seen, and I've read in their studies, seems to be minimal at at best. I would ask that the office request the traffic studies from both DOT and SCA separately. So that way we can actually see what studies they took. It's my understanding that there's information out there that DOT did a study. We should ask for those. I I think tonight, what we should be asking and demanding is that SCA actually appears in front of us. I I I think it's pretty ridiculous that they're not here. I I I think, you know, quite frankly, we we should demand from them or even put forward a resolution that they appear in front of us. I mean, this right now is their project. We we were told at the, I believe it was the January meeting, that they were coming back to us. They're not here. So I I don't, I don't know what happened in between there. But we were told as board members they would come back. Coming back to this actual issue, I think we as a board, quite frankly, I I I don't know what we did as a board. And I feel incredibly bad for this community, and I live, you know, not so far away. But the the fact is, you know, when I look back in hindsight on this issue, we really let down the community here. And there's no other way I could say it, but we let look at the timeline. Our board had knowledge of this issue back in October that it was coming to us. And when we did finally get this in, you know, our our knowledge of it as a board member in December, it was rushed to an education meeting. Actually, we first went to land use, and in land use, Chuck said to us, and he said to us even before that, that he had a conflict, and that he couldn't do anything with this issue because he represented the UFT. So it went to the Education Committee. We rushed forward a resolution in a board meeting to give the Education Committee power to do it, and and I have to apologize because I was part of that. I think I put it forward because I was trying to help the problem, but I think I heard it. I think I made things worse with that resolution. And when it came in front of the board in January, it was stated to board members that we shouldn't even vote on it at that point. And at that same January meeting, we were told by board leadership that the entire issue would be watched as the process went. But it doesn't appear so. Because in the six, seven months, we didn't have one meeting discussing this issue. And I guess in the entire time that that SCA was doing their scoping, it doesn't appear that we did anything or were involved in it at all, even though we were told that we would be by our own board leadership. So I think for me, the next thing I heard was an email going out to the board that the EAF was done, and then I got knowledge of a city council hearing that happened that adopted the 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 environmental negative declaration. But we didn't get any notice as a board member. But we didn't get any notice as a board member. We did absolutely nothing. We sat back and did nothing, we didn't take testimony. I went and I looked up the city council hearing. I looked up the notes, in there they have testimony. Two people testified at that city council hearing. Both were from SCA. So for the first time a school was built in our community in twenty-five years, two people testified. Why is that? I'm guessing because nobody knew. And I don't know why, as board members, we weren't notified about the city council hearing. I could think about other issues that we've had. I could think about just recently in North Riverdale, we were sent several emails about a mayor's Office of Contract Services hearings, but we learned nothing about the school sighting. And now we're having a public hearing, quite frankly, the meeting was at my request and sending an email just to tell the community that these things were going on.
No, actually, it didn't.
Several months after, and Laura, please don't interrupt me, but if you want facts, the facts are, in August, you sent out the NAGDEC to the board. And maybe a week or so after that, I sent out an email to all of the executive committee members, and I said, let's have a public meeting and tell people, because there's expiring timelines, let's tell people what's going on here. And then in late August, you set a meeting for September twenty-ninth. Those are the facts. Those are the facts.
And the day after your email came, I told you we are looking at the twenty-ninth and trying to get School Construction Authority. Thank you, Dan, thank you.
Understood, I'm sorry, but I'm not finished here. We let the community down, and I still would like to know what the heck we did as a board in the seven or eight months. And what I would like to know from board leadership is why board members weren't notified when the NAGDEC first came out, and why we weren't notified about the city council hearing? No answers? No answers?
No, I, I heard.
I'm glad you heard me, but again, there's no response to why we didn't tell the community. We tell everybody that we're transparent. We love going around telling the world, oh, we're transparent. But apparently, we're not. And we have an extremely big issue here, especially for this community, and we told no one.
Thank you, Dan. I see Chuck's hands up, Chuck.
I forgot that there is one other pressure point that is available here. The School Construction Authority, let me just give you a piece of information, I'll give you the pressure point. When this was originally broached, at least I heard of it, it was in the context that the SCA was going to acquire the entire site, and that there was a possibility that portion of it would be spun off residential, perhaps affordable housing. I did not know until roughly the board meeting, when we had, pardon me, the land use meeting, that the owners of the property had refused to sell the entire property to SCA and had instead sold a portion to SCA, the larger portion to the residential owners, and that they were working between themselves as to an easement that would entitle the school to have some space, I think it was twenty-five hundred square feet, in what was essentially intended to be either a courtyard or a parking lot in the middle of the building. That's all very vague, but that's the lack of information we have been getting here. And while Dan points the finger at somebody for not having advised, if you don't get told, you can't advise. But put that to the side. There is a pressure point here that is important. And what we've got to do is to try and figure out as a board those who are interested in solutions. In terms of trying to put together a plan, this is a gubernatorial election. The governor appoints the members of the School Construction Authority on the advice of the mayor. School Construction Authority was set up so it would be taken out of the city's hand and be an independent entity, because its predecessor was as crooked and as delayed as you could possibly get. So this one has replaced it by using arrogance rather than corruption. The issue is, we should be putting pressure on the places where we can get a result. With respect to SCA, I believe Senator Rivera is the first point of call. Senator Jackson is a highly influential and superb elected public official, to the extent he still has some portion of the district. People should talk to him and let him know. He is an extremely effective public official. We should put, make it clear to those who are working for the governor, this is something that is an acid test for her to see where she comes out. These are her appointees. We should say, make it clear to every elected public official that they all ought to make it clear this can't go on. As for the developer, that whatever we have to do, we can do there. There is one other issue. If there's information, first of all, may I ask Laura that Ms. Carlson be sent, if we have a copy, either by electronic mail or otherwise, a copy of the EIS that was sent around? So that that's a good starting point for her to see where the facts are, what School Construction Authority has represented and has done. And if anybody else wants a copy of it, call tomorrow the board office, and they'll give you the link to pick up a copy of it, all right? That's a good starting point. But that's what we've got to do. So let us see what we can pull together as a, as a community board, as a constructive way of fighting this. This stinks. I don't think you're getting a serious question about the fact that it stinks. The issues you're getting in terms of the process by which to deal with it. All right?
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, again, thank you all very much for coming tonight, and a lot is the storm. Okay, thank you.